Julie, is this still being recorded?
No, I just explained that.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Emily, whenever you're ready to go.
Okay, I call this meeting to order at 7:01 AM. We will now take attendance.
Commissioner Almond.
Here.
Commissioner Emily. Commissioner Belicia.
Here.
Commissioner Amelia. Commissioner Ada.
Here.
Commissioner Carmen.
Here.
Commissioner Madden.
Yeah.
Commissioner City.
I'm here.
Commissioner Zara.
Here.
Commissioner Collins.
Here.
Commissioner Ria. Commissioner Nusha.
Here.
We will now create the minutes from November 8. I motion to approve.
I second. I second that motion.
Not sure if we still need to do that with the down, but since I didn't ask. Sure.
Commissioner Almond.
Hi. Commissioner Belicia.
Hi.
Commissioner Ada.
Hi.
Commissioner Carmen.
Hi.
Commissioner Nadi.
Hi.
Hi.
Commissioner Zara.
Hi.
Commissioner Collins.
Hi.
Commissioner Anusha.
Hi.
Okay, now moving, we can create the minutes from November 8. A little bit for. A announcement. Anyone can be announced something they want to add on. Okay, we will now go over all business starts getting with in the household number.
I think that happened like a month ago. Yeah, but it went really well. I think like it turned out really nice with the decorations we had. That's all I can think to say. So I also want to say something.
Yeah, some of my family went to see it after and they said that it was.
Yeah, we got tickets, so I think three tickets to four, I think we have. Yeah. That's cool.
Did you guys go see it like after?
Not yet. Probably going. We're planning to, yeah.
Cool. What about the Yak social?
I'm gonna ask you guys any. I think we need to do asking for like public comments.
Oh, I appreciate that. Okay, make some points. Okay, now moving on to the Yak social. I think it was. Yes, go ahead.
Yeah.
I thought it went well, there was a good turnout. I think people generally enjoyed the snacks that provided and the. The therapy dog and therapy cat.
We're talking about, yeah.
Oh. Oh, we have social. I'm sorry, but that went well, yeah. I think we had a good time socializing with the other. Youth commissions and. I think we got a lot of good ideas discussing.
Yeah, I agree, it was fun like meeting. Seeing how like they were. It was really interesting to see that like. To see like life terms or like until they graduate.
Yeah.
That's a. I know you guys discussed during the Yak social, there was a good portion of it. We'll talk about the Yak attack. Do you guys get like an explanation of what that was during the Yak social?
Oh, okay. There's gonna be like a bigger Yak. And there's gonna be like a theme and food.
Sort of like leadership.
Yeah.
So, yeah, part of that was. Getting some input from everybody for the Yak attack, which happens every other year. And I haven't actually been to one either, so they didn't have it last year. But they are planning to do it this year on March 26. So. That'll be a really fun event again with all the local. Area. There'll be more Yak presentations and workshops to go to during that. And I think it's kind of like an all day. Something, so. Did you go in the past time or did anyone else go?
Yeah, we.
Yeah.
It was super fun, it was right before pandemic, like shut everything down, but we did get to go. Yeah, it was really fun, we got to do some presentations too, like our youth mission. And we. Yeah. Yeah.
I think everyone has to put like.
Yeah.
Like most people.
You have to hold a workshop and then your whole youth mission workshop coordinated. Like I think that year our presentation was use your voice. And then it was really fun, like we had people like, we were talking about like, I guess, political views and we had people like move to different sides of rooms like. And Kate there on. Stances on different things, but then it was like, yeah, it was, we did some silly ones, like tying up with some people and stuff like that. But yeah, it's just like you have to hold engaging conference. And then that's what you spend the day doing, it's like bouncing around to your workshops.
And yeah, I think will be something to start thinking about in future meetings here pretty soon. You know, what. Kind of topic we want to discuss or kind of lead something on some. Future.
Any public comments? Now for study hall.
Oh, yeah. Yes, like I said earlier, there was a good turnout. Everything went well, the wifi worked fine, the snacks were good, the people enjoyed. Meeting the therapy dog and therapy cat. I think it was a productive study hall.
Yeah, I was really glad that therapy cat and therapy dog came through as well. But yeah, I don't think there were like, I think there were only like six. People other than like commissioners or. Um, which like, I don't know, is it too empty because there were a lot of us there still, but. Definitely we can try and think about how to like get more people come, so yeah. Like, I also was talking to someone like at the Storytime in San Antonio event later in the day. And I was saying that like we had been in that room like a few hours before and like she knew about the study hall, but just like decided not to go. So like, I don't know, we like, I think, I think like people like heard about it maybe, but like weren't. Like super thrilled or not, yeah, somehow like they didn't want, like they weren't really encouraged to go, so we can definitely think about that a little more.
Yeah, I know it wasn't, I thought from the posters and I spoke to all my classes, I told my friends about it.
I think one of the problems was that people didn't really understand, like I talked to my friends about it, like oh, and didn't even understand what it was about. They knew it was like a study hall, but I mean, in school, study halls, just where you kind of just study. And I'm not sure if they understood if it's just like that. Like what would be offered?
Yeah. I know pretty much everyone was there, which was awesome. You guys, were there any things you think would have improved the event itself? Being there, I know, I think our courts would have been useful. That was something I thought of, but. Yeah, any other things you think could have made the event so better?
I like that we had a lot of chairs, but it also kind of made it feel like there's lots of little show, so maybe I can kind of, we can add more tables if maybe.
Anything else?
Maybe we could invite like, we're making up to invite like teachers, you know, some teachers that file the whole. Like students, so at least my teachers do, yeah, so. Yeah, options for students to get help, that would have been nice. Or like, yeah, just having like teachers and tutors present, I've drawn more people.
I'm seeing the public comments. Okay, Storytime is, yeah, I know, I had a lot of fun, I think it went very well, it was a lot of people. That's very well, it's awesome.
Good to hear.
Very exciting. At least for me. We don't know how much fun the kids had, I think they had a lot of fun, but I know it was really cool.
The other two probably didn't know what was happening. Very much, but the other ones.
Yeah, the other ones.
Yeah.
Yeah. For now. Definitely.
I felt good because I felt like we were doing like a really, like a real public service to the community, like, you know. Families can finally get a photo with Santa this year, like they couldn't last year.
Yeah. So, small business Saturday. I know, I'm just. Yeah, are you?
Yeah. Yeah. It was really fun, actually. Yeah, we're having good time right now and talking to the business owners and like whoever was there and taking. So it's a nice opportunity to interact with each other and also.
We got, we posted, we have posted two visits so far, I think the third one's gonna be posted and we have the third and fourth one ready.
Okay, I asked you guys, yeah.
I know, I'm sorry, I didn't get the application for a text box, it didn't come up for some reason.
Yeah, just let me know when you want to post it. I mean, I think they've been, been already like more likes from some of our other posts and more like comments for sure, so. People are really.
I know, I sent them to some of my friends and they've been commenting.
I wonder if that's like.
Yeah.
Seems a little targeted, but. Instagram's like algorithms are funny, just you know, the more likes you get, the more other people's pages that'll show up on and stuff, so.
Yeah. So the clean water project.
So I know. We started talking about that a little. Meetings and the last meeting. I think everyone really likes doing some kind of. Free form like art contests where people could either submit, you know, like paintings or drawing or photos or videos. Any kind of artistic expression that would have to do with some kind of theme around. The West Valley's clean water. Information hopefully shared the best, so. I reached out to Sheila, who was the representative from Park, from our place. She let us know that, say, I could go ahead to be able to do like gift card prize. Didn't say exactly how much, but we can, you know, discuss that too in the next part. But she said, I think it's definitely a fun bucket of gift cards, like their conscious idea. She would like to. Have the commission. Come up with like kind of a brief scope of the project and kind of think about more details as far as like, what's the goal, the submissions, the timeline. How we're gonna promote, how we're gonna get entries, things like that, so. Yeah, just want to have some more discussion on that and also maybe get a better. Subcommittee kind of built around that. We only have Felicia and Simone, if they're still interested. So if anybody else wants to be a part of that, so it'd be great to.
What if we did something like the scavenger hunt, because I think. A subcommittee did it last year. I don't know how it turned out because I don't think I was part of that subcommittee, but I think that might be a fun idea, like the scavenger hunt. Remember that, I don't think we got a lot of certification with that, so I think it was like an online thing.
Also, last year I worked with, I did like another like art contest thing with these commission and with. Like Lauren Council, that would be cool, I forget. But I know like schools are really eager to have like their students submit arts. Contest, I know, like our teacher has been asking me and asked if I ever want to submit to art contests, so I think it would get like a lot of, or like generate. Lot of engagement, I think we had like fifteen or twenty submissions last year for our art contest, so I'm.
Yeah, so it kind of, I mean, I think like that's our contest is something we kind of decided on, so I think that's what we're gonna move forward with. The scavenger hunt was fun, that was for Earth Day and Arbor Day last year. And that was, I think a lot of people liked that. But yeah, for this project, I think we're gonna make the art project of something that. Kind of decided on, so. What do you guys think is kind of a realistic timeframe for this? More details on that.
Um, I think, I guess, March. Yeah, a lot of time to plan, get the word out.
Yeah, also I think March is good because then like students will be like swamped with like finals and tests and all that, so they can have time. It should definitely be before, I think, like April though, because in May, like a lot of students have like. AP tests and stuff, so I feel like just planning it out like a month or two before is pretty good.
Yeah, and I was picturing the art contest from last year too, which was all virtual, so the way they did that was, you know. We of course made the flyers and all those regular advertising, like we would get out to the schools and the art teachers. And then we just had like an online forum for them to submit the pictures of a file or. Their arts and then. Yeah, we have all the submissions in one place, we had deadlines for them to submit it by, and then I think we had, you know. Judge it or something and I don't know, do you remember who we had to judge?
I think I remember like making a Google forum or like other people like.
Did we have voting?
Like, I don't exactly remember, that's what we went with, but I remember.
Yeah, I guess that's an option too, do we want like just set judges to pick their common choices or do you want a voting system where? Anyone can go vote for their favorites.
Would it be like us, if we do like voting, would you do us the commission or how would we?
We could set up, you know, again, like it would be like an online forum for everyone. We could put it out to the public, first put it out to us. Just be a forum that anybody puts on and then looks at the files and pictures and things that were submitted and.
I think that would be good because it like more people could. Interact with us as like, yeah, it's not bad.
I, I agree, but I do think that that might not work if not enough people are.
Yeah.
Like involved, like I think it'd be easier to get people to like art than.
And there's always someone who's like bots, just might not.
Also, like, do we want people who have submitted art to like be able to vote for that, because like, we're sort of gonna have like this. Well, that would enable this contact to like get to submit art and like, do we need like a whole neighborhood of people to like be participating as well, so. Yeah, we got the people who submitted art, but definitely want people to vote for them, so that would get a lot of people like to our website, like learning about like. Oh, I'm just going on the youth mission website, so getting kind of that involvement.
Or the judges could be like teachers from like the schools that we go to and like they could kind of talk about the whole thing to their students like in their class, so that could also work for like. More advertisement, I guess.
Yeah, I agree, I'm actually thinking a panel might be better because like, I guess if we get like more votes and more public involvement, that's good. But like, also kind of, I guess it makes the contest less about like whose artwork or something actually represents. What the purpose of the contest is and they'll make it like more about popularity, see if we're more popular, they can just get their friends to vote and then like see who the votes, so they get the gift card or prize. So yeah, that's like something, that's like something we want to be aware of.
We could have two categories, you know, you could have like a judge pick their top votes and then have like a public favorite or something, you know. A community favorite and that could be a different chat for.
Yeah, it'll be better.
What if one person, the one like. The top, I guess.
Yeah, we should just let the public choose one and then like a judge or a group, a panel of judges could choose, one would be.
Like, we should have judging, maybe like we should think about it from like an artistic sense and then also like, how does it like. Work with the prompt and like for the goal, like of trying to, yeah, promote like sort of stay known in like. We talk like get the whole form of the water or the.
Yeah, I'm sure it would be fine with us. Do we want to involve, you know, maybe one or two art teachers in schools to judge. All right, no, he's better. Good art. All of us.
Does photography like count as part of the project or is it like strictly just for drawing or painting?
Including photography.
Okay.
We're also on those videos and stuff, so like I think it's called.
Creative.
Yes. And I feel like if we were worried about getting, you know, a lot, I don't think we're gonna have like a ton of entries, we can definitely get some good entries. But if we were getting like a ton of entries, then we could make different categories of like the photography category and a painting category or something like that, but. I don't think that'll be too much of an issue.
Also tell art teachers to, love this, you should know about this.
Yeah. A rubric would have to be made though, right, like for the judges to use or is that something that we want them to create? I think it's better if we make it so like they know how to kind of guide the contest, so I think that's something that we have to think about.
I feel like it depends towards our, right, so if we get people who actually like, you know, about. Was it, yeah, clean water or, or it's unlike, I think maybe they might have or be more entitled to make this, or to like choose the winner.
Yeah, maybe we can ask, you know, the art teachers, you want to get involved if they think there's. Some kind of follow that they know works. Yeah, I don't know where to start with something like that, but I'm sure they wouldn't have some ideas. Or maybe it'll just be kind of like an open discussion where they get together and decide. Is the best or which region like that. That's a good idea. I think, yeah, moving forward, we should have a subcommittee, you know, kind of start thinking about timeline of the events. Goals of when they want things done. Contacting our teachers, we could get a list of everybody's schools, art teachers, how would be. And does anybody else want to be on that?
I'm me too.
Yeah, I'm not sure if I'm already on it, but if I'm not, I'll.
Please, yes, and on you both still want to be. Yeah, that'll be some stuff you guys can start working on together as well. Moving forward. Any other questions or ideas on that? I guess.
Oh. Public comments. Okay, we can have a lot of new business, starting with coffee.
Anyone who has been to coffee, has anyone been to the in-person coffee in Fall 6? You know, okay, well then, we lived there last year.
I'm sure.
You guys want to give a little. Kind of overview of what's we did.
Couple of city council members and. I also see some people members. Was it a large room? And I think they took those out, I can't remember it that well, but I feel like there was like a list of like general questions that a commissioner asked them, they answered, and they were really. Open to just any questions for people. Make it might be a little in person. But yeah, that's what I remember. Add anything.
Yeah, I think it's just like a search Q and A. Format of an, I don't remember that one all ever, but yeah, I remember.
See impressions for you.
Yeah. It was happy. Occasionally.
Flares together with all the others being close.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I think. The main goal of it in the past, past, past years was to, you know, have an opportunity for. You know, the community teens and stuff to meet with like city council members and, and superintendents of the school districts and things like that, like people that. You may have heard of, but never get to interact with very often. So I think it was, again, I'm saying, I think because I didn't get to see what it was like, you know, before COVID. But, you know, it was supposed to be a casual event where you guys could come and talk with them casually and, you know, in a comfortable setting. So moving forward for this year, the. Right now and plan for it to be in person. Something similar to what we did with study hall, you know, stuff like a sign in system, things like that. What it looks like, you know. That can be up to you guys for discussion, it can be. Just literally like no structure, people come and. You can have, you know, coffee and snacks and things and then they can come and just mingle, or we can have this kind of a structured like. Q and A session where we have each of them maybe scheduled for time to talk about themselves a little bit and then people ask some questions directly. Totally different, I'm open to discussions and ideas for everybody.
If I remember correctly, the in-person one was, I don't know if it was at a coffee shop. I hate the coffee shop as a mountain to move, but I kind of like that idea because it doesn't feel so structured, it just kind of, it's a lot more casual, comfortable.
Like a coffee shop in that Tom Campbell.
Yeah. On. We need to do something more structured. We could be like a panel. Have them sitting and then either we can have like some discussion question or something like that, or then we can have people ask questions. Because I know people look like they have questions and you still don't know how to get them answered. I think you should keep kind of like a mix, because I like it, you know, talk with them, but I feel like, you know, for teens, it's usually threatening, just walking in, doing, hey, what's your deal? So they can have like a small panel, so they ask questions and get a little, kind of introduce themselves a little bit. Or we could just do introductions or something like that and then have those people, the teachers.
So should we have like, like you said, them. So should we have like, like you said, them introduce themselves and then we like the, the commission asks a few questions? Like everyone else to tell you can ask a few questions.
Yeah, yeah. But I think a huge part of it is how like unstructured and casual it is, so that aspect of it. Specifically right now, um, with, I don't know, like here in the city school district, like the superintendent and the board also, so I think it could be a really big event if we get our members from the city to see what's done. It gave a lot of questions, a lot of, I think, thoughts and discussions that could be had, that could be really cool. I think it's like they have meetings every month, every two weeks and everything and I've heard that those things have been going or. Yeah. So getting them to talk with the superintendent like directly could be really useful.
Ideas, thoughts, questions about the event.
Um, is there a timeline for this? Do you know when it's formal planning to have it?
It is a new agenda item, so we haven't discussed time or anything. I was we were trying to book as many other rooms as possible for things that open up to the public. Bubble facilities here, so I did book Q eighty for March fifth, just in case. I just wanted it as a backup plan. But again, that is the not coffee shop location, so it could be a backup option if you for some reason can't get a coffee shop to be okay with having this there. I was thinking March fifth would be a good time just again, to be a little bit away from finals, give us some time in the new year to start reaching out to the members. Hopefully we got to get them on their calendar as soon as possible, you know, get some time playing for it.
Is it, is it, is it? I do know, I know like a plan for like standardized and stuff like that, but I do know like there is the SAT exam. The week after, so yeah. I will be there anyways, yeah.
You guys have a, you know, some other suggestions for days?
I think that's kind of getting a little closer. The nineteenth? Cause the twenty-sixth is the.
Yeah, that's, I guess I was trying to give a space from the architect, but yeah, the nineteenth, that worked.
I'm wondering if we should just go ahead and like plan for the fifth because we're also thinking about having a clean water project sometime in March. And so I think we shouldn't be trying to see too many events in the same month.
First or second week of April. Um, cause we might not want to do it like spring break. We also have different spring break, but mine is in March.
I think most spring breaks are before, right?
Yeah, mine's first. I think the week before a thesis.
March taking? Do you think of Fridays? Well. If we do a weekday, I'm guessing it should be after school, right?
I think that's really, well, I mean, I know, I know I was thinking of like sports and stuff. But in terms of when things get out. Or, um, or like what you can, we could do it on Friday.
I feel like a Saturday is better.
Yeah.
Are we talking about a Saturday?
On the eleventh, we have a meeting.
I unfortunately cannot do the sixteenth, I won't be here. I got things for that, at least that big events.
Yeah.
Do you guys not like the second or the ninth potentially in April?
The second and the ninth, the second is when our break, the second night of our break.
Yeah.
The beginning of it.
Most people will be back, yeah.
Yeah, the second I think people would leave. Automatically, so like right away.
I guess there's the issue with like lack of exposure to advertising over break though. Right? Like we might not hear any news at all when they arrive on Saturday and that's just the one problem, like on the second Saturday, but still my forgotten.
We should push it to the second existence and something before, please?
Yeah.
Yeah, I can do that. I think we're fourth, but yeah, we'd be guys, because then that gives us like they're not going to specify from like over. These people are, if we do it on the ninth, people are gonna probably forget about it.
Also because of COVID, I feel like not to, I guess like a less people won't be going somewhere far.
That's what I was thinking. Yeah, do you feel like a lot of people leave for spring break usually?
People might be going because I think things are starting to. It's more regaining from the second.
Yeah, we'll put a tentative thing on that one, so. Yeah, so I want to make sure we've got a good subcommittee for that one. Let's see, we've got, yeah, quite a few people since they were interested in that subcommittee, but wanna kind of form it officially now, would like to be on that subcommittee.
Mine being on it, but I know this, I think, doesn't work for me, so I can help with the planning.
You're like, you know, passionate about helping with it, setting it up and it might not be on that day. Right, so I got Thora Palace, Emily Madden. So I think, yeah. Meeting, discuss more things to move forward with that, it'll be like um contracting, I think coffee shops maybe first to be like who is going to be comfortable with us having an event like that. Location, um, they have any restrictions, you know, that we need to think about. And if there's any days that they don't do it, so that might be the first thing I'm looking forward with them.
I think it might be like a, as far as it's due, like smaller coffee shops, not just like the Starbucks.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know we have a Starbucks down there. It's kind of, it's kind of small, like having an event like that.
Yeah.
The only, the only other two ones I know in Manhattan are what you're saying, coffee. And then like. He said pretty casual too, like. I think I have others besides coffee.
Is it possible to like book a certain like part of the coffee shop like just for that or is that like not a thing? I don't know.
As a commission, do you want to decide kind of who we want to, like the people we want to invite or should we do that like as a study?
I got a little more of a subcommittee decision, just to start, you know, making a list of who wants to invite. Definitely not everyone will be able to make it, so maybe there's, you know, top choices you want to reach out to. But don't start reaching out to them until you have a date, you have a date like super nailed down.
You can share with the entire commission if you think it's real.
Yeah. Yeah, and yeah, anybody can suggest somebody for sure.
The emailing for people should probably be done by like the end of January, just so like it's like all finalized, because I feel like that would be.
All right. Yes, so the city, I haven't got to update on you guys on this for a while because it wasn't on the last B agenda. Um, that city of Cooper Tino and Saratoga would like to do joint events with us. Um, so myself and their two liaison started talking about, you know, what that might look like and what we think is kind of doable. And they felt like they would really love to put on kind of almost like a big kind of like fair like field, fair feeling event. Where it's really like only teams allowed there. I'm thinking a little bit like Bogotino, I know it's not much to go over, you know, did anyone else get this, sort of Bogotino? It's a really cool event, you know, they have just like the whole area like sectioned off, like they only let teams in with school ID. Um, they have just tons of games out there and booths and things. So I think they wanted, or I'm, that's what I'm picturing at least, so they would, both their commissions are on board with it. They'd love to have a joint meeting with a few of us to all kind of talk out more details. Is it just kind of a general idea that we think would be fun, that we do really want to hear from you guys about like? What would you like to see there? What would, you know, make you want to go to an event like that? We've wanted to kind of be a one day, you know, one four or five hour kind of chunk of time on one day that you could just come, hang out with friends. See maybe some performance, little performances by local people. Like selfie booths and like different things like that. These are all just like ideas I've been kind of talking around, so. So yeah, I wanted it officially on the agenda, so you guys can talk about it and decide if that's something we would like to partner with them to do. It does seem like kind of a bigger event for us, but because it's like two other cities, it's very likely to, you know. That's something we need to figure out. Yeah, I know, we're trying to, we're trying to all think about what's, what best kind of locations we have available and then we're gonna talk about what, yeah, what places might work.
Outdoor, right?
Yeah. They're talking about doing it April twenty-third, it was kind of the best date that worked for them. And I know we didn't have anything on our calendar right now, so.
It sounds like, like the weekend?
I know what's fun, did like for the like campus school plans, whatever, like they had a playful stuff, they kind of like, you know, the idea that I might have thought they had some like nice square.
Yeah.
And they can play long pools, kind of pictures, something like that. Um, I'm a little worried about getting teams to come though, I feel like it sounds pretty fun. Do you know if there's like a budget or we need to create a budget?
Our budget, yeah, it is pretty tight as it is. You know, we're looking for ways to be resourceful, Cooper Tino has more of a budget, I think Saratoga has a little bit of a budget. So, yeah, and that would be something, if there's something that we really wanted to do ourselves, you know. It might be able to be discussed. If there's a way to make it happen. But yeah, we're kind of trying to also create good ways to be resourceful, like I have a full-sized popcorn machine that brought like actually our group contribution, you know, and it's not very cheap. You know, as far as we were thinking, like if everybody, each city provides something for the performer. My first thought was, oh, we've got some really good, like Zumba instructors here that maybe they put on like a ten-minute performance to get people involved with that, but yeah, so thinking of like. All ideas there.
Yes, nothing like, I don't know, but maybe, I always feel like dance companies or individual people that, you know, who's asked whether I was there. I don't know, like, how exactly that would work, but we can put something out that would, that people can like volunteer for, so like ten fifteen.
Yeah, do any of the school stuff, like dance teams or clubs?
Yeah, let's call it the dancing. Also for like the performers and all that, I know like, at least there's like a kid here, a couple kids who are like trying to get like their music off the ground. And they're pretty like hungry for places that perform, so invite them and like all their friends will all come up to.
Yeah, I mean, you know, Cooper Tino's plus attendance, so like their events are a lot bigger. One, the only thing that I thought, you know, maybe have something to do with it is they have like very consistent, like the same kind of set of events every year, so like you're maybe that buildup over the years of doing kind of the same thing. Yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, I was thinking, okay, um, from location, um, I think if this, you know, has like really big events, we could probably do it with a junior classroom, like get more people. Both of them, or I was like Campbell would get like. I went to Bogotino and I was so surprised because there were like a lot of people there. And I was like, my first thought was, my first thought was like, how do they get Bova for like anyone who wants it? My last, my second thought was, oh my gosh, a lot of people here. Yeah, I think holding it to the team would be a good idea.
Yeah, Cooper Tino, hi, um, there's like Main Street, like right in front of it, which is like a lot of stores and everything, yeah.
So would it go with here, it's placed next to like the Life Ferry?
Yeah.
There's like a.
I think so, yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay.
And it's nice because it's really easy to like rope it off, so then they have just like a one-entry area. Yeah, I remember the year I went, there was like a gigantic line, you know, up around the parking lot, it's like crazy, so, yeah. They, they get it done.
I went. Oh my God, so like in freshman year, I went to Tino, um, and like they didn't really talk about their like events a lot. So I don't really know how they have a lot of participants. I feel like it's just because it's the same events, like.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We could use it also as an advertising opportunity.
Yeah.
I mean, I like the idea of inviting, you know, like the school clubs and things to perform because I think that would get a lot of attraction to them. If they're, if they're going to be the performers, more people from that school are gonna want to go see it, I would think.
I know what's not has, uh, they have a dance team and we also have like a break dance.
Oh, yeah.
What if we could have a dance off between the different schools?
Uh, was that?
Yeah.
Oh, I didn't know that, okay.
We got choir.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
Oh, we can have a yoga corner. I don't think it's like.
We could also do just a bunch of like, like field games, like I mentioned like four holes and like.
Like volleyball and.
Right, yeah. Doesn't have to be too structured, they can just have like food, um, different, people can just come wherever they want.
I think that's the general like idea for it, is to have like fun events that you guys would really enjoy. And to like get away from all the stress. and to like get away from all the stress of other things for hours. Kind of the idea.
Is the date prime flexible or is it kind of a question?
It's hard to move it because of the other two cities, they just have a lot, we went back and forth so many different dates, so it's what's kind of the best one that works for them. Yeah, there's potential it could move, but.
Can we have a contact point?
A contact for what?
Contact, but with the van.
Um, yeah, I've got, you know, I don't know. Danny, the C, so Cooper Tino's definitely is on, if he did keep some politics last year, we worked with him, also Kayla. Is Sarah, I guess.
Oh, I'm assuming the entrance, are we like a good, um, make money off of it?
I think we'd preferably, you know, not, because we want it to be a free event.
Like if we did like a fair game?
Sure.
I think the food would probably amaze you.
Yeah.
I see, I see, yeah, but I think, I mean, if Cooper Tino has like what they will do, but you know, hopefully they keep with for food.
Which is partner with Cooper Tino forever.
Yeah.
So, yeah, there's still a lot of details that need to be figured out for that, but everyone everyone's kind of in agreement of working towards the event.
Yeah.
Um, then a rough kind of subcommittee for the VAS, I know there's quite a few interested in that one as well, but if you want to give them a fifth or raise a hands. Do keep in mind what other subcommittees and things you have on your plates, it's totally fine, but I want you to be comfortable. I don't want to, I think I missed it. You're good. I was like in between. And you can still, you know, obviously do things like that, but it's good for the subcommittees to plan things a little bit more. What?
Anything else they want to add? No other comments?
Okay, so moving on to after term again. So, we are operating through the term, you guys. December, the rest of the month is going to fly by. We're not gonna have a official subcommittee in two weeks, so for the time loss. But definitely think about, you know, what we talked about in your subcommittee and if there's any time to be planning things and getting together with subcommittees, you definitely can be doing that. But if I want to do a check in, I mean, things we've done so far already, we helped with the October fun runs. We decorated the Ainsley House, we did the Yak social, Storytime of Santa, study hall events, and the virtuals and all those, the Saturday posts. So, it's been a good, good start of the term, I would say, you know, getting things done, but I don't feel like it's, um, crazy or packed.
I think right, I think the second half of the year is gonna be a little more.
Yeah.
I think we've also got pretty well between events, we kind of helped with our events, which I like.
So just kind of looking towards the future, you know, we're gonna have the February fun runs to help with, so that won't be too much, but we'll be helping. Don't not know yet, they're hoping it's in person, but obviously variance and things like that will come into play and I'm not sure when they're gonna make that decision.
I know, if we are able to do this in, I helped in person a couple of years ago, we had a youth commission table with our banner, you get that water, I think it's really good, so hope that this is.
Yeah. Um, so that'll be in February, obviously. The coffee and politics. Yak attacks. Our total clean water art contest. Try city events. Those are things, they all, we already have kind of set. Also be kind of our tree planting. Pretty easy one and it's just a fun couple of things to do together. I just kind of want to like everyone to kind of be aware of those things, that's what we have coming up. If there's any other things that you're like, I really wanted to get this in this term, or I really felt passionate about, you know, some other kind of events to do, or something you want to kind of get in there. I wanted to open it up for discussion kind of now, so we can kind of be thinking about it and getting a plan for, because you're right, the second half of the term is going to go by really fast, it's going to be a little bit more busy. Everyone's going to be doing school stuff, you know, I feel like a threat, it's tough, so. Are there any other kind of plans or, I mean, events or things you guys really feel like you would like to try to fit in for the second half?
No.
I just, I want, I want you guys to have the opportunity to talk about it, you know, if you, if there's something that you've been thinking about. I know the job fair was something that the youth commission used to put on before COVID. That's usually done in the second half. How do you guys feel about that, if that's something you want to prioritize?
I know that was, when I was, when I, on my first education, I thought I could ever do this, but, yeah, that was a really good event. A little concerned about could we already do it a lot? But, yeah, don't get me started, that was a good event, but.
Isn't like the Chamber of Commerce to something like that now? Like I can remember last year seeing like a Chamber of Commerce poster about their job there. I didn't get my think of it as far as like. I don't know if they're doing it again, but.
Um, yeah, I remember about like, in my, in my first year here, like we had put on the job fair and then we, and then we went, like there was a really good turnout. Especially among the high school population, and also for the Chamber of Commerce one would be the same, if it doesn't offer like opportunities for teams. Because when we held in the spring, like the point was to like have all these jobs and like groups and volunteer places, it wasn't just for paid positions. So I'm coming to showcase what positions they had over the summer, like a lot of teams got jobs through there. And it's really helpful, so I remember seeing a lot of my classmates there, wondering if we should hold it again this year, or like we should have the Chamber of Commerce to maybe see if they're like, still have teen opportunities available.
I did, and it looks like they had a job there and um, but it looks like there was something like that for like adults, like for everyone, so I think it was just specifically on teens. I think schools would advertise it a lot. I think we're gonna get a lot of interest, I know, when I went, I wasn't, I wasn't old enough to get a job, but I sure really liked it because all of the they just have like tables, different businesses, maybe do like freestyle, like candy or a little something.
I did, uh, we had like a raffle for gift cards during it, so that also got, um, to stick around as well.
I think we did like a raffle on like 100 minutes, pretty fun.
I don't know if we have the budget to do that.
So it definitely helps people to come to participate.
Yeah.
Maybe the businesses that are participating would donate something to raffle as well.
Yeah, and they would definitely benefit.
I mean, we can definitely, I know we can do it, but I want you guys to be realistic with what you think can happen and if it's something you really do want to make happen, then work on it.
When would we do it, because I know that March and then it will, and like we have one, a couple of things in March. So when we do it, like February or like May, like it's our last thing.
Yeah.
I don't think May is a good option, just because of like tests and stuff, so.
I wouldn't do it May.
Oh, yeah. Maybe like mid-May, like in between.
In, in between.
Yes.
Yeah.
There is also like an SAT time in like the beginning of the year as well, so something square we like in the middle of May.
People also like tend to look for summer programs during that time, so we can also like try to like, yeah, so we can also try to show those there. Yeah.
People, yes.
Um, we should probably create a calendar full of like, kind of like all the AP tests and.
To create a calendar.
We can't, we can't count for everyone.
Yeah.
Yeah, I feel like, I mean, this is made here once.
Yeah, generally this is gonna be the best time, so. Oh, whoa, the, so it's a week of the 16th. That would definitely be like a last event, the end of the year meeting is the 23rd.
Oh, wow.
Oh, a week after that.
Yeah. I mean, we don't want to do, yeah, we don't want to do end of May, so it's more okay. But I mean, what is the like 14, 15 first?
I think the 14 would be good.
Might not have to hold on the weekend, because I remember like when I was there, we held after school and then the time kids showed up, like we rode the bus for throw. And then I rode the bus there, so yeah, it's pretty fun and I still go home in time to like do a bunch of stuff, so. But we held on a Friday afternoon, I'm sure the turnout would still be good.
Yeah, we could do the 13. Like right after school?
Yeah. What do you want to do with four?
I'm on the college board like website and I think it's from May 2nd to 6th, that's like the first week, and then it's May 9th to the 13th. So I think like that day, or like after that is probably good.
Yeah, but I think 13 is like the very end.
Yeah, that's a good option, yeah.
I would never like, are we good with doing this?
I've never been to one, but from the sound that it sounded like it was pretty popular.
Yeah. I'm worried, I, yeah, I'm a little worried about how much we're doing. Like we have to kind of like sacrifice something to be able, because it's at the end of the year and I know, end of the year sounds a stretch, like such a like money tradition, like usually we're done, but like early. So.
I will say, I feel like it won't be a high effort event, but it's bringing up the, comes to them, yeah, different companies or places that might be hiring, it all would be sending them emails, if you want Christmas present, this thing on this day. We'll have tables, you can just, you know, bring us up here between this time and this time.
I think they would have to do a little bit more work than we.
Yeah, it would be a little bit more on them, but for us, it's mostly just providing the space and the tables, which is very easy here. So, I will say, I don't think it's going to be a very high effort.
If no one's like super, super passionate about it, it can be like a tentative event.
Yeah, we can revisit it in January or.
I think revisiting is what we're doing here. See if we're able to kind of point out the businesses too. Yeah. But I think that could be a really good one for us, considering like the turnout that we are getting. Oh, yeah. Okay, and that case, no further comments. We can go on to calendar reminders.
So, I'm ready for the fun run, and we're planning to have the art contest in March of 2022. And the Yak attacks is on March 26th, 2022. And then we're planning to have our coffee politics around April 2nd, but we might change that. And then the joint event with Tino is on April 23rd, and the job fair on May 13th, so we're going to play.
So, I'm in ninth grade, so this is my first final ever.
Oh, wow.
There's a lot of pressure on that.
Yeah.
Yeah, so definitely a lot of staying at home and preparing and trying not to procrastinate. Yeah, that's all this.
We can actually go around the table.
I've been, I have been practicing a lot a little bit, because I've had like four tests this week, I focused on those first, because very cruel teacher. Um, and yeah, I'd like, I say I like rain until it actually rains. I'm not a huge fan of it anymore, so that's, that's it.
Yeah, I had luckily this year, I don't have one class that has actual exams for finals and I had that one today. I was really stressing about it, but I spent like all my time on that, so like the next few days, I'll have like one day to do each of my like final papers, which will be really stressful, but I think I got there, yeah. Take my shoes at like 1:00 AM on like Saturday night, or I guess Sunday morning. Because I was like, you know, I'm like really stressed out and I just decided to take my shoes and that went well, they're like really pretty, so I'm happy to have that. I'm not worried though, no, I, I can send pictures.
You feel good about the test you took today?
Um, I don't feel as good as I do at the midterm, but I don't feel awful.
Um, I, I'll be confirming my school musical and the classes can have today. Um, and I'm just excited because we start right after rate, so.
What musicals?
I just asked.
Oh, yeah.
There's probably posters around school.
School's been pretty bad. I have two tests tomorrow and my heart is flapping, and that's like not even related to finals. For my bio final, it's like a two-year course, but not, like the final is on everything we learned this semester and everything last semester, everything last year. I don't know if I remember any of it. I don't know how to do derivatives, which is fine, never. Really counting on those retakes, just hasn't put them in yet. We'll see, and whoever said senior year was like easy, big fat lie. Honestly works than all of junior year.
Yeah.
Yeah. Just college essays.
Um, not much of a program right now, uh, but my dad's birthday was yesterday and June 42nd, and I also learned that he has his adoption birthday as of March.
I don't think I got to say it guys, but I thought the date. Yesterday, things are a lot easier, so. It's gonna be way sooner than I thought it was gonna be October 1st of this year, and I'm like, oh my gosh. I was not ready for it to be that fast. Um, so, yeah, that's a lot of stuff on my list.
That's so exciting.
Congratulations.
Um, for me, I guess not much's been going on this school, I feel like it's sucking up my life. Yeah, but, um, my dad's birthday this weekend, so I have something to look forward to. And, yeah, it's like mostly trying to survive last, not start being here, but I've been doing okay, I think. Same, so yeah, I finished the same things report. And then, I guess, yeah, this morning, like there's a lot of traffic, and so I do like rainy days, but I don't like the traffic. And then, so I showed up like six minutes late, um, like the whole class was staring at me. So, yeah, I was soaking, because like I had to walk through the rain, I got some, and I was like missing a sock, because I dropped. Yeah, yeah, so, okay, yeah, anyways, that was a weird experience. We got to watch a movie in class, like, I took some of the awkwardness, embarrassing, like.
We got to watch a movie in class, like, I took some of the awkwardness back from the break, and then, yeah, it was not a bad day.
Um, it's just like school for me, I'm really tired and I don't want to do anything, so I'm just trying to like get over this week and then be done, but yeah.
Um, while, like, like all you guys, you know, I'm doing my finals Tuesday, all six of them. Um, you know, but, um, one good thing is I finally finished my yearbook draft, my new book, and I could finally finish the page I was assigned, so.
Look at that, we actually did round table.
Yeah.
I think everybody's excited for break, yes.
Okay, I adjourn this meeting at eight, eleven PM.